I'd like to call the Graham County Board of Education Special Call Meeting, May 25th, 2023, to order. Mr. Matheson, would you mind leaving Ms. Barrer, please?
Dear head of all God, I just want to thank you, Your order for the opportunity to be here this morning with our board. Dear God, I just pray that you would be with them as they make decisions that affect our school system, dear God. I want to thank you, Your order, for the successful year that we've had, dear God. I ask you, dear order, that our kids, latest, from the son of your order, that you would just put an edge of protection around them. Pray, dear God, for our teacher, that she will watch over them as they're away from.
Help them, dear order, to get some rest, some relaxation, dear God, to be rejuvenated, to come back again, honest, dear God. Point of candace, thank you for all that you do for us, for your many blessings. Thank you for the place that we live, for the people that are around us in our community, dear God. Dear order, just pray, dear God, most of all, that you would just help us, dear order, to be Christ-like in our daily walk, we rise, dear order, that let people see Christ, that love us, dear order. Just thank you, dear order, for your Son across the caliphate, the salvation He provides for us. It's in His name that we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today?
Do I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Please say.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the May 2nd, 2023 minutes?
I approve the minutes of the May 2nd.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any vote?
I oppose. I'm going to ask a question about it first, is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just, I...
I believe that has to be, discussion has to be done before the vote, is that not correct?
I'm sorry, I was following up with Jacob on that. This is point board, and I can be wrong. What are you asking about?
We, I approve, he asked for approval of the minutes, right, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, the May 2nd, 2023 minutes.
You, you, he made the motion, and I said it, and she...
And I said, "All in favor," and any opposed, and she opposed it.
So she has a question.
And Chip's question is, uh...
It's not being approved yet.
Have, are we supposed to discuss it before the vote?
The minutes can be, right. If there's a question on, when you ask for approval of the minutes, that's where the discussion comes up.
But what happens if it's a cor- I know, I have another correction.
Yeah, there's always, sometimes there are corrections, but it's not to challenge, um, how the vote was or anything, because is there a correction? A wrong name, um, wrong day, um... Wrong staff member?
Uh, that's what I, that's what I have.
When you call, when you do the approval of the minutes, someone can ask questions about the minutes.
They didn't have to vote, did they?
But the votes, yeah, and just last my clarification is, when you've already taken the vote...
But he's, that he asked for approval, and she, she...
I disagree.
He disagreed.
I don't think that's approved, and I just put you through that basically.
But that's just one person.
It's up to the chair, if there's been some need for clarification. When you ask for approval, okay, about the, when you ask for approval, this plan of board member says, "I need clarification on..."
So are you saying I should have said it before he asked for the vote?
No, I...
No, when you ask for approval of the minutes, if a board, that's when...
And I got a, a motion and a second.
Right.
And a vote.
I'm just saying, when you do talk about minutes, if there is a question on the minutes, when you ask for approval of the minutes, that's when a board member says, "I need clarification on, uh, Ned Long's information."
Well, it's not a big deal, if you want to, if you want to go along with that, too.
No, I mean, all right, what, what's your question?
Actually, I just, I was concerned about that party here where it's talking about, remember I did that, informed consent? And we discussed that we were going to, um, there's a panel that we need to go through.
That is, is it wrong in the minutes?
Well, it sounds like I'm supposed to do something, and I, I was under the impression that I was handing it on to this night. And that might be all it is.
So, so I think the impression that we got from that was, when something comes to a, a policy that you would also see in place, it would bring in... Typically, the way we do that is, you bring your suggestions for the policy, otherwise, there's nowhere for the board, or for the community to start. So if you have a suggested policy, a model of policy, something, that's where it starts.
But you want it in writing, that's what you told me last time this day. Where, where I came in, because I did come in, was a policy, I did have the, the whole spiel was about a policy, but you want me to write it?
Well, as a board member, you set policies, the board sets policies for the school. And policies generally, and some, some policies are issued by general, certainly, by choice. But if you see other policy, and yours was about informed consent, so you come with something. You come with what you see as informed, informed consent.
In writing.
Everybody can write.
Yes.
And then that gives the committee something to, to talk about. And then the committee comes back to the board, and the board decides. But the committee needs something in writing, you're saying, or something out there that'll help the school.
Okay, okay, so it's not something we bring to them, and we can vote on poli- we can vote a policy in by ourselves?
No.
Okay.
Wait, it has to be worked out, or you just, you have to have it in writing.
Well, I think that attorney, maybe she misunderstood that that you spoke to, remember I told you I spoke to that other attorney? She, this is kind of how she told me to do it, so that's how I did it. That was even more than a, um, school board association.
If you did bring it to our future, I think it's sort of, for the next step, really, is put it in writing exactly what you'd like to see in it, and that gives us a basis to start.
Okay, that's a brilliant answer, I can handle it, I've done it, and I vote for it, I guess. I vote, "Yeah."
Mr. Moody, is anybody signed up for public comment here?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to close public comment here?
I make a motion to close public comment.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, reports and discussion items, Ms. Knight, personnel.
Yes, during closed session, I'll bring you a host of names for new positions and summer positions.
Mr. Matheson, CTE local plan, come up here, pack your shirts.
So, I've got a little handout for you. This is, uh, CT at Glance, over the past, uh, this kind of helped this year's senior group. And, uh, since 2022, so just when they were juniors, when this bad, is called the CT bad, it's kind of, it kind of stays a year behind. But it is time for us to approve the CT, the local plan again. Uh, so the plan is actually written on a two-year... Uh, this tells you, here we have doing very well, uh, CTE students in, that are fantastic, in the English classes that are tested. The one place that we are a little bit low right now is in science, and that tends to be, just looking at the model from across the state, most of the, most of the CTE, uh, students across the state are sort of low in science. For some reason, science forces have not rebounded the same way as many other classes are starting to rebound. But, uh, it tells you here that we are 995 credentials, which that's 246 kids, so many of those kids earn three and four credentials. So, uh, just doing a fantastic job, appreciate our teachers, they're working hard. Fantastic job, uh, she's kind of the one that's older, the testing and the credential side of it. She's working with teachers to make sure, uh, that they're able to offer more things each year. And, uh, the state is, the last two years has kind of stepped in and give us a pot of money just to purchase credentials, and also to purchase materials to help prepare students for those credential exams, so that they can get some certifications. So, uh, Leticia's doing a great job of working with the community, uh, at the CDC, and we've just got lots of great things going on, and we're ready to start our act program. So, uh, we'll be starting the barn in a couple of weeks, uh, we'll be, soon the wood's starting to go up, and we're excited about that. And, uh, we've been up there working a little bit on site prep, and, uh, things are great in CTE. So, basically, all I need is a signature from Ms. Knight, Mr. Nelson, and Mr. Barron, uh, and then I'll submit this to Anna Air, so...
And you need a vote for us?
I need a vote for you to approve the local plan, and it is the same plan as last year, so there are no changes in it, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Matheson. Do I have a motion to approve the CTE local plan as presented by Mr. Matheson?
I make a motion that we approve the CT, and CTE plan, that is, it approved by Mr. Matheson, it's not changed.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Ms. Gable, federal program annual presentation.
I have given out, uh, a short list, or it starts out with PRC 49, and I would be able to put that through. This will be what I'm going to enter this morning, is the federal grants. Um, I want to go over each one, and kind of tell you a little bit about how, uh, the use of these funds, and, um, basically, what I'm going to have to do is look back at this year, this full year, and allotment that we have for each of these, uh, funds, budgets for this year, because I do not have the upcoming allotments, you know, they cannot be given out.
Yeah, so, so we lovingly call these federal grants, and I know we talked a lot about banks, these are, no, banks, these are our federal allocations that come into store, for our...
So, uh, PRC 49, this is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and it is for preschool, uh, only. So, this grant this year, we have a allotment of $22,599. The use of these funds is, it helps us fund one teacher assistant, that, uh, for exceptional children, and that person, and actually, that house that a kid plays. It pays for 30% of the salary of this high school here. Uh, moving forward, PRC 60 is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act for handicapped children. For this year, the allotment, where they allow the carryover, was $364,977.95. We use these funds this year, uh, in compliance with IDA Part A, you know, makes the fund services for students with most intense needs. This included 100% of three exceptional children's teachers, 40% of one exceptional children teacher, and two full-time teacher assistant positions, including supplies and materials for exceptional children, and some workshop expense for these, uh, teachers that are in this, uh, allotment. So, uh, any questions up there? All right, moving on to PRC 50, this is our title one, and this is, uh, in compliance with the EdRIS students' seat act. This grant is used for supplementary costs in core academics at Robbinsville Elementary School. Uh, these calculations are partially decided upon by the current reduced lunch count, which is, this quarter, we're currently at, is 69.55% at Robbinsville Elementary School. Uh, we have school-wide program, um, where all students can benefit from these services, particularly those that are most raised for academic difficulty. Parental involvement is a major component of, uh, this allotment. This grant employs five, excuse me, seven full-time teacher assistants, 15% of our behavior liaison. In addition to grant funds, 15% of the director's salary, 25% of administrative assistance salary. Title one supports research-based programs at Robbinsville Elementary Schools, such as foundations, integrity, straight reading, just words, IXL, number roles, and universal screening assessments. There's also a budget amount for students who are considered homeless that are in need of additional support and services. Moving forward, with PRC 103, which is our title two, improving teacher quality. The allotment for this full year, with the law of the carryover, was $54,195.98. The use of these funds are used in compliance with Title Two, Part A, to develop and implement strategies to lower class size, retain teachers, and provide quality professional development for teachers. This year, the funds reduce to pay 90, 90% of a first-grade teacher.
Back up here where it says, um, there's a budget amount for students who are considered homeless and are in need of additional support services, do we hear?
Yes, we do.
We do.
So, uh, and that does, those funds are used for the district students who are considered homeless, and we have several...
What's the additional cost?
We have, we, uh, we set aside, and we set aside as part of this, about $50, uh, for...
Very much kind of services.
We, uh, we utilize this for backpacks, things like that, personal supplies.
Sometimes paying fees for things?
We pay for fees for, uh, the ACT.
Oh, okay.
Stuff like that, so we...
Ms. Gable, I know that Miss Wiggins is not in his, she's our homeless account, but...
Yes.
What typically do we run in homeless numbers, or just, just generally?
It would be generally, right now, probably approximately 15 or so, if it goes over bounds, yeah.
And, and these are, these are children that are maybe like, maybe doubled up, like, uh, maybe with, uh, a dead boss for a home, and maybe doubled up with, with a family member, or a neighbor, or, uh...
Maybe son plan.
A son, son plan, a lot of that...
Sounds like some of them are going here, there, of course.
That is correct. There's just the rest of the...
They are homeless, it's just here, they're not...
And to add, we do have some students at the elementary school, and I'm sure the other schools, that would make just the more traditional, uh, definition of homeless. Uh, we've had families living in their cars, um, different things like that, tents for the year. So, we do, in this district, have students who meet that very traditional, uh, definition of homeless as well.
So, moving forward, uh, we're all below income schools. This allotment for this year, with the law of the carryover, was $67,327.75. The use of these funds for this full year was for assist and parent, for our school nurse at Robbinsville Elementary School. The last one we go over is PRC 108, which is our title four. The allotment for every carryover this year was $58,330.34. This grant, and funds are used in compliance with Title Four, Part A, to be used for students supported by academic enrichment. Funds for the 2022, 2023 school year were used to support safe and healthy students, and to support the need for a well-rounded education for students. Funds for this school year were being used for the same purposes, and those are district laws. Those, uh, funds are student payments of preschool, uh, for use in, in those specified areas. Any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve the federal program annual presentation as presented by Ms. Gable?
Make a motion to approve the program.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Moody, facilities up there.
This should be good.
I know, um, yeah.
First and foremost, I want to talk about my assistant, uh, I cannot brag enough on these guys, I know Ms. Knight, we're saving them this, but we've been down two man about a year now. So, everything's done on our campus, basically, now three men, uh, Patrick Nichols, uh, Roger Gibbs, and, and Ken. And as they are keeping up with the facilities, which I'm going to talk about the elementary itself here in a minute, uh, they also keep up inspections. So, when they were doing inspections on the football field, we passed files, we noticed they were shifting in the bleachers. They, uh, tried to come up with, tops two companies got to come and look at it, see if they could fix it, whatever. Both companies denied wanting to have it. So, they got them bleachers, which have to probably through a hole, probably smaller than that seat on that chair. But if they're jacketed, broke the concrete twice while they were under there trying to fix it. But eventually, they did get the bleachers out, there were problems, and put metal plates. Now, we have two problems, basically, with our bleachers. One is the foundation, which looks like a stair step, and the bleacher is roving the very top, or where you could even reach up and grab certain parts of the rig or... That's problem number one. Problem number two is, they're stair steps, you know, there, there's one row, second, pop another, pop another. And the way they're shifting and setting, they're sitting on the very end of the lip or edge, and I've got, if you look at your packets, actually, there's pictures in them. They're about to go off. Now, the worst problem part of it is at the bottom of the bleachers, that with stress cracks and with how they're shifting. And the problem is, if one of the bottom ones go, it'll be a domino effect, and the whole thing will fall. Uh, so, uh, we, uh, after they jacketed the plates under it, still, the problem's getting worse. This is when we got to contacting an engineer to come in and give us an assessment, and this is the assessment that you're looking at now. This, he's going to give us two reports, you have the first one, which shows what the problem is and why we should live it. The second one, hopefully, we'll get in the near future to let us know how we can remedy the situation if it's, if we can. Uh, which is difficult, it's not going to be easy, and it's not going to be cheap. Uh, and right now, also, time is our worst enemy, uh, getting these things done. As you know, we already have to move back to our, in graduation, I'm not sure if we're going to have football season here. Uh, I think we've already made accommodations for the first three home games to play somewhere else, uh, to buy some more time. But, uh, that's, that, so they, high school and athletic coaches have to take a care of that.
That's not confirmed.
It's not confirmed, we have discussed, discussed. The, uh, Jason Moreno, uh, has been always fabulous and helping the schools in any building projects, has been with us this whole step away, being a liaison with the command of commissioners. Me and Miss Wash and Roger Gibbs, uh, went and talked to commissioners a few weeks ago, so they were able to form a, so they could be aware of it, because this is not just our problem, it's going to happen there as well, in my opinion, because they also use our facilities for, for younger football, uh, league. And for both of us, it's, it's not just about football. It's the biggest money-making sport we have, and it helps fund all the other sports for the rest of the year, not even bands, who gets concessions for the football game. So, it's, 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 it's about the whole, uh, the whole line of the school. So, we went and talked to them, uh, they were very receptive, had a couple of phone calls from Dirk Cody, Dana Adams, who wanted to have, best any way they can. Uh, but as of now, there's nothing we have to tell anyone, other than we have to wait to see what the second report says on how to fix it. Which I, I just don't see any other way around than having to, without removing the bleachers, if it's fixable, to, to fix one thing, if, uh, underway. Uh, so again, like I said, our time is our worst enemy, and it is the most big, it is the biggest pressing issue that our, our school are facing. I also like, and this is a gem, at some point in time, it's just not about the football field, it's about our whole campus here. There is going to be serious talks sometime soon about the future of moving this whole campus, uh, over there or somewhere. It's a, it's, it's horrible to protect from a safe schools issue, but we're putting on a band-aid on negotiating, or we're not. Uh, it's, it's, we've had problems with suburbs, it's, we've had, it's just, it's just old. You know, I think the, the primary building wants to have nothing to see, CPs, something like that. So, uh, uh, but anyway, that's, that, that needs to be discussed at some point, too. I know we probably may not see it, as far as, uh, me and Ms. Knight, but we'd like to, you know, at least get some kind of plan started, because it's going to be a process.
So, we did last year apply for a capital lease grant, and we need to build up, you know? Uh, so we at least applied for it, we didn't get it, because we had an open, uh, middle school construction job, you know, so, uh, but now that that's completed, we will certainly reapply again every year, at least, that way, the state knows we're trying, we're trying to do something. Really, land is our biggest issue at this point. It's not the best idea to build up on the campus that we have, it doesn't change security, and that, but at the same time, we have got to get out of this crumbling, old, will-be buildings.
Why do you say it's not feasible to build up?
Well, it is feasible to build up.
We have it.
We do, and we've got the plan, but it still doesn't change the safety, the openness of our campus, you know, locations.
We, we have, yeah, so we have a footprint here that we can be on, that's going to be on the same campus, and it's going to be three or four stories.
Over here? There's no place over there to go up?
No, right, the high school campus, oh, no, no.
You have had me on a thirty, thirty...
So, there's no place?
No, that's my sentence, but anyway, again, it's, it's problems that we look at. I know, I think, how much longer do we, does, do we owe them, high school, is it not just about pay for it? And Ms. Ms. Knight, I, I tell you, I've never seen anybody get the grants that she does, thriving for it. You know, with that, and with the grants, we can look at, you know, getting used to, if somebody with ball roll, it did not really cost taxpayers any money. So, uh, again, but that's, that's a side story, I think it's something I should look at right now, time is our issue with the football field. Uh, that's all I can tell you, if you go up in front of you, what's happening, why are we shutting down? Hopefully, in the next week or two, we'll get the second report, tells us, okay, what can we do to fix it, so that's going to be the...
We believe at that point, we may call a public meeting, just because there's a lot of stakeholders involved, we would like to let everybody know at the same time, because you guys will have to be involved, commissioners will have to be involved, so we will let you know as soon as we have the report.
But this, this concrete has been here since, or eight?
Nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty-one.
And, I mean, concrete is going to a breakdown.
Exactly.
Yes.
So, I mean, yeah, ultimately, it'd be great if you could just pick those sections, uh, move them out of the way, fix the underneath, like, you can see there, it's already coming apart. So you pick them up, there's some crumble, like...
You're just putting a band-aid on it?
Oh, yeah.
That's all.
No matter how we fix it, it will be short-term.
I mean, yeah, when you start moving, though, if we have to dig them up with a crane, set them out of the way, we're going to lose some of them. There's no, uh, say, uh, stress fractures all through them, there's already places where the, uh, the ends are breaking off from crumbling, so...
Mr. Allison has had us, you know, he's called me a couple of times about moving down, because there's a rear poking through that we needed to, to, uh, take care of, something that might go get hurt already.
And there's no way to remove the bottom bleachers without putting them on the football field, and you'll just have to go let them have real football field, take it across. Springboard system, if they will be, I said, it's going to be an ordeal. And just sort of giving you an idea of pictures, you know, each column, as you said, has, has two support structures under it, and then sits on top of it. Well, on both sides are lips, like right there, on top. So, what's happened is, the one above it is sitting on that lip and not on the support, so that's a problem. And then if you shift it, if you fix it, then you're going to have a gap at the top.
Yep.
You know, so it's, 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 it's not a good situation, but like I say, I'm not an engineer, so we can wait to see what they say. But like I say, the sooner we get something, like Ms. Knight said, that we need to get together.
Well, of course, you know, uh, we've not had any questions about this, none of us have. But I think sooner than later, because I have, I have had several folks, sooner than later, if we can come up with...
The, the minute we get that report, we'll...
That we can come up with publicly.
We have to.
We're going to have to put an outpouring of people willing to help.
Yes.
We'll get a plan. But you also have an outpouring of people that have... So, there's, but people that are willing to help, whatever.
The biggest issue is, I mean, the way I look, and we have lots of people willing to help, but also, this is school grounds, and anything that we do is going to have to go through an engineering, maybe an architecture firm, I mean, you're looking, I mean, there's, you know, when a school does something, it, it, there's red paint... you know, when a school does something, there's red paint to go through.
And drills move very slowly.
Yes.
We're going to try to do what we can, but ultimately, you know, there's two, there's two schools to stop, whether you keep the big house intact or you move it. Either way, we're looking at a time commitment here and money commitment. You know, you're going to have to do something to keep this stadium down here, even if, if the school thought moves to move in the stadium, that's a multi-year.
If we move around tomorrow, two years from now, we may look at that, as you say.
So, you really going to have to look at a patch here, and then, if y'all choose to do something in the future, then begin to work toward that, but there's going to have to be a patch in some form, fashion.
Well, I'm not taking, I'm not saying, quite a good way to say, I'm not taking a position on moving or leaving or fixing or whatever. When I first got on the steward, I walked around all the campuses, and there were so many liabilities down there around that, where people come into the stadium, roping off pavement, and I even talked to Mr. Moody about it and things like that. Even went over to the high school, would love to see the high school wrestling and baseball field paved, because there's some liabilities there also. But like I say, I'm not taking a position, we're going to listen to everyone, but there's, and we did get some things done, didn't we, Mr. Moody?
Well, we probably sunk a couple hundred thousand dollars in the football field already, bringing everything up to date with the safety issues. From the visitor side, it was a huge safety concern, the bathrooms were built back in eighteen hundreds or whatever. So, we fixed those, we're still having issues with those plumbing, but we've made great improvements, it's just now, this is just.
Well, so this is what happens as you begin to have aging facilities, and we're just going to have to address not only this, but the elementary school, you know.
At some point in time, maybe a package deal, we can do both of them.
At some point, you may have to look at some sort of on referendum, you know, with the county, you know, at some point. I mean, you've got to, facilities have got to be kept up, because the more, I mean, like right now, the elementary school means, part of the elementary school needs a roof. I mean, there's, there's tons of leaks, the suburb can not say that you can have trashcans in your hall with any rainstorms, you know, but, you know, she's got the oldest facility, but they're sitting in the next oldest facility, and you also have things, so there's just going to have to be some major commitment to upgrading facilities. We're very blessed to have some of the nice facilities around, I've go to places other places in the state, Arisland, like the Taj Mahal.
Yes, ma'am.
But at the same time, there's still our aging facilities.
Yes.
You just have to address, and we've tried to address them in stages, as we've had the money to do so. You know, we're trying to retrofit restaurants as we can, and different, you know, places in the campus, but these big fixes are, we just going to have to be a joint effort.
High school musical was, this year will be thirty years old. And just great, and they're really good at keeping up with the facilities, but that's, that's pretty old.
They moved into January of nineteen thirty, thirty years this year. I mean, like, oh, in the high school hall, the restaurants, they've never been touched, they were in desperate need of being redone. I mean, you know, and we would try to keep our classrooms up to date, and we try to keep fresh paint on the walls, the floors still look pretty good in those places, but there's definitely a lot of expense that needs to be put in, yeah.
So, let me keep going, it goes back to the testimony of our maintenance department, our custodial crews, you know, people taking pride on campus, and, you know, we've had issues with vandalism and David, sliced around for us, shut that thing, get the other cars we do, take care of facilities, that's up and gone. And for our kids, this might be the best place they come to, I think, so, to get food, clothing, shit, education.
So, Ms. Knott, you said that you're going to get involved with the commissioners and everyone, are you like talking to like a brainstorming meeting, like everybody getting together and starting coming up with ideas?
This really means that he and Ms. Walsh and Mr. Gibbs went down already and informed him, we've been trying to keep them informed, Jason Moreno's been involved every time we go, we'll get a facility, so that there's a liaison involved, but, but yes, when we get that report, really, probably, we'll just call a public meeting to share that with everyone, and then from that point, we'll decide what the path is, the best, quickest path forward.
And I'm also, I'm also forward to this, this new report, it was what I'm thinking this year, so, to Jason.
But most mover, local government is ultimately statutorily responsible for facilities.
But, but if we have to play and we can't play on a field here in Robbinsville, it's probably going to hurt our 50, right?
Because there's no that.
A lot of our older people are long, when we travel that long.
A lot of our kids will travel, so, I mean, one of the things that I hope and wish we got, a terrible situation with activity buses right now, it would be great if we could provide an activity bus for students to ride that don't have ways to gain, you know, we're going to have to host home games at Cherokee or Hayesville or wherever, but...
You've got other places that won't drive out of town at night, they'll go and travel.
Exactly. You're talking about thousands and thousands of dollars, and also, the economic impact on Grand Canyon, the campus of Robbinsville itself. I mean, our restaurants here, they look forward to Friday night home games, because they're packed, they have people waiting to sit down. That's huge revenue for the, for the gas stations and convenience stores, and that's all they're going to come, you're talking about thousands and thousands of dollars.
And it's also the county, it's also the county rec league, because if we host a home game here on Saturdays, it's fourteen.
Yep, it's all day.
Really, truly, county youth league, you know, pro capita uses that facility more than we do.
Yes.
And they won't even be able to have a season. Where are they going to play? You know, we're trying to work for other, for this day being the varsity to play at other schools, but our county rec league is not going to have that option for home games. I mean, I'm not saying that they can't still practice somewhere, but again, all those games will be away, and that's going to make it hard, there's going to be some kids that that's going to count out, that their parents just don't have the money for all the travel or, you know, all those other things, and I have kids who look forward to that just like crazy, they look forward to it. I had a little girl stalk me first grade, and she said, I need for you to have a cheerleading practice, and I said, but I don't have a cheerleading tent, and she said, well, I need to be a black night cheerleader real bad, so I need for you to have a cheer practice. I hadn't talked to her and explained the rec league, so, it matters to those little ones.
Absolutely.
Well, it's going to affect our athletes, too. I mean, playing on a field that is not your field, that's going to mentally.
And I'll go ahead and share, while Coach Walsh has already reached out to some of the ADs, but, I mean, we've discussed with Hayesville and Cherokee about hosting those first three games at their facilities, because they have turf fields, it's really hard for us to ask Andrews or Swank, because it's a grass field, and there's a lot of maintenance and a lot of time goes into that, I mean, the field has to be lined, it has to be painted, I mean, so, those fields, I mean, it's kind of tough for us to say that we can play on your grass field, you know, so.
And then on top of that, would we have to pay?
I'm sure, I'm sure we will have to pay.
We would contract with them, because it's carpet, we'd have to line, but we will contract with them, and then we get the gates, and then I suggested just the possibility if, if we could do that, and the schools would allow us, that we could take the food truck over and sell concessions to the bands.
I just feel like so, but, I mean, you're talking about us losing thousands and thousands of dollars.
And, you know, just the effect on the community, because our community needs events, they need to come together, feel as one, because that's what we pride ourselves on, as a county, you know, is a tightly knit community, and that's one of the things that brings everybody together, and it would just be really sad if we can't work this out, so I'm going to take positive, and when we get that report back, we're going to do it as quickly and efficiently as we can somehow.
And that's only the first three games.
Yeah.
And then, I know that Dean has talked to the football team, they're very, they're very upset, because they're hearing all the rumors and stuff, and, you know, especially this senior, so, he's kind of settled them right down, said, you know, until we have something to worry about, we're going to continue on as we go.
You know, then you think about, you just bring the lawn chairs and set everybody up around the top, I mean, we will.
That's an suggestion.
You can't say that many people there, but, you know, we can, we're a brainstorm, and we're going to look and see what we can do, so, we're going to do that, that's possible.
Well, what we can do is, I expect it'd be better, if we give them money, if we had here, but we have to spend a lot of focus keeping off the bleachers, but another problem that is, too, is if they take those bleachers off and set them on the football field, it may not be playable.
Right.
And you gotta look at, too, and again, I, you know, I'm trying to be pessimistic, but when we had the gym in here, we couldn't find three companies that we could beat against, so, one step is, what are we going to do, sexy, because who's going to do it?
Right.
And get materials for the talent.
Materials is, anybody that's worthy of things, they're probably good for a year.
We're going to do that bleachers for how long for the?
Oh, gosh. Within two years.
Yeah, two, three years, yeah, right. So, there's just a lot of things. One good thing, though, is Booster Carrying Drive's plane has prepared to give us the first five hundred thousand dollars, we got torches.
Good boy, Chip, thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Carr.
That just went out with white paper.
That was a good laugh, thanks.
No, I'll get to it, thank you for this.
So, you want to talk about auxiliary gym? Let's talk about that just a little bit. We have a termite infestation issue in the auxiliary gym, so, until the football bleachers were the issue today, the auxiliary gym was, because that's going to be about a seventy thousand dollar repair bill to do that.
Were the termite issues? So, they got to do it.
Well, they think they probably came in with the wood.
The PD teachers called and said there were all these little flies things flying around, so, this morning, but they got, they noticed that there were holes pouring up through the wood, and so.
They were all over the floor.
Everywhere. And so, we are still seeing some, they, they came, Termites came and did spray, just, you know, but we are starting to see more places where they're pouring. So, they're starting on Tuesday, they hope people come and take out a large portion of the floor, we're hoping that they have not, it's contained to a certain area, it's not the whole. What's underneath the floor?
Concrete.
Concrete. You know, they had that plastic they pouring, and they removed it, but, and they got had to be in the wood, I would say.
Yeah, if you have a house on a concrete slab, and it's wood on top of that, they can get.
I don't know, I mean, when that floor was put down, probably ten years ago or so, I mean, the concrete should have been treated at that time before the floor was down, whether or not that happened or not, I don't know.
And then, yeah, after ten years, it's coming out of the ground.
So, they're going to come in and take out the floor, starting, as you say, to take a couple of days, and then Termites will come in and treat it, and then, when they come back in July, and finish, like they redo all floors in the summer, they will paint it, I mean, sand it and paint it.
So, best case scenario is, is localized.
Yes.
Worst case scenario is, the local has to come up and redo them, which is about a seventy thousand dollar.
I'm going to tell you, they're taking most of the stuff you treat, they're taking most of it off the market, they take care of it.
Well, especially in schools, we're very little.
This is also created another issue, because Miller can use auxiliary gym all summer, and so, you know, I was talking to Sarah Knott, and she has a cheer camp schedule, and so, the gyms are taken up with volleyball camps and different camps, and so, she's going to have to, like, one afternoon, take the girls out on the football field, you know, we said, you can't get the bleachers and everything just for a couple hours, because she has no access to a gym. So, it's an issue with practices and, you know, limit this summer.
And to add the cherry on top, in that seventy seven year old building that we've talked about earlier, the primary building, we are having possible septic tank failures over there, and this summer, we're going to have to close off that part, and I know that maintenance is going to work to redo some of the piping and, and try to get that flowing, best we can tell, it's going into an older septic tank and part of it's.
No, that's, that's not true, right now, we've ended up finding where it goes, it goes, it's being pumped down the front of the fourth and fifth grade hallway, so, but, so we've got, we're working with the town to help remedy that situation, they're supposed to come this week and have jetted out, but in the meantime, below the elementary cafeteria, there's sewage running out on the drain, so, that's another issue, we've been talking with the town to come in and help rectify that situation as well, so, yeah, it's good times.
Yes, but we also are very thankful for the help that we're getting from the town, because those guys in their maintenance crew.
Chad Harbors, right, anytime we call or ask, you know, he come in and brought some dark equipment for us to try to find where the primary went to, and we had Darren Lael come and help, but the town's been great, and they're always, whenever we need them, they'll drop wherever they can help us.
But we have been told this summer that there's going to be a lot of work with pots and things over there for us to not have like our summer camp in that hallway, so we'll be having it somewhere else, so there is also this sewer issue with us.
Yeah, so, welcome to all facilities.
And those schools are very thankful for our new building.
I just can't rest, this school feeling like.
Nobody likes a braggart.
Is that all?
I've got none of that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We need to have a problem.
Mr. Green, budget amendments.
Here comes a posse bill.
Please announce what you should work.
I know, I know it's posse.
Whoever stacked the agenda, that was a good book, and you went from the problem to the money guy next, so, yeah, flowed nicely, yeah.
Okay, we have a few pages of budget amendments that I'll present, the first page, these are budget amendments to the state public school fund, first section there is PRC one thirty textbooks, and PRC is Program Reporting Code, it's just a different, it's a numbering system to identify different pots of money within a fund. I like to always reemphasize that when I'm presenting budget amendments, but the first section is PRC one thirty, this is textbooks from the warehouse, we received an additional seven thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars, and plan to use that for textbooks. Next section down is PRC thirteen and fourteen, this is career and technical education, this is an ABC transfer, we have one month of employment that we didn't need, that was allocated to us, so we're going to transfer this one month of employment, which equates to seven thousand six hundred and two dollars, and move that into CTE supplies and materials. Next section down is also an ABC transfer, this is for PRC's one thirty and one thirty-one. One thirty is where we receive our allotments for textbooks, PRC one thirty is for textbooks that we request out of the warehouse, a lot of those, we rarely ever request textbooks from this source of funding. The other source is one thirty-one, which is other textbooks, which allows us to purchase textbooks, maybe it's from Amazon or some other supplier, but there are also textbooks that are approved by the curriculum, but we're moving this allotment, a part, portion of the allotment, thirty-six thousand one hundred dollars out of traditional textbooks, and moving that into other textbooks. Next section down is PRC sixteen, this is the summer reading camps, we received an additional three thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, and plan to use that for summer camp extended contracts, what that, what that means is, is that's a different budget code for the tutors who'll be working during the summer, but they like to separate those expenditures rather than from a teaching code. Next section down is PRC twenty-nine, behavioral support, we receive an additional seventeen thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars, and plan to use that for supplies and materials. On the next page, we, this is PRC eighty-five, literacy intervention, if you look in the credit column at the bottom entry there, the amount of additional revenue that we received was one thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars, but there are other entries there, you'll notice that I've taken twenty thousand dollars out of supplies and materials, and reallocating that, early in the year when we have this allotment, I kind of overload supplies and materials, because we don't know how many students and tutors are going to have during the year, so I reallocate. So I'll reallocate that later in the year when we find out how many, um, stipendments and subs supplying materials we actually need. Next page, this is a budget amendment for the capital outlay fund. And, uh, this is funds where we, um, pay for big ticket items such as active buses, replacement crews, etc. Uh, this particular budget amendment, uh, is to show the financing, uh, for this year for yellow bus that we've received. Uh, that financing, uh, is not our responsibility. It's paid for by the state and their financing company that they have chosen, but we have to put that financing, um, we have to put the actual expenditures and revenues and also the budgeted revenue expenditures on our books. So this budget amendment, uh, is for that bus financing and that's $23,055. And on the last page, we have, uh, these budget amendments for Fund Eight. The first section there is P R C 413, N C pre-K. This is actually a reduction, uh, in the amount of this budget by $14,714. Um, I can't remember what months, maybe it was October, November, December, somewhere in that timeframe, uh, we had some attendance issues, so revenue, uh, was reduced because of those attendance issues.
It actually was because, uh, in addition to that, it was because we had a teacher out and in N C pre-K, you have to have a certified teacher. And we're not, they're just not available. And so, uh, if you don't have that in place, you don't need to allot work for that month. The substitute doesn't count in that.
And then the last section.
Certified, most certified preschool teacher. She says it can't be skipped yet.
Uh, and the last section, this is a new grant. This is P R C 578, Burrows Welcome Cast Grant. And you read about that a few weeks ago in the Grand Star. This is a grant that Ben Davis supplied for and was awarded, and that, uh, cast grant stands for Career Award for STEM Teachers. Uh, the total for this year is $30,000. And unfortunately, there's only three allied items in this budget, so it'll be easy to administer. Uh, the three allied items are the teaching professional stipend, professional development and supplies and materials. And again, the total for this year is $30,000. That will be carried over and we'll receive an additional $30,000 each year for the next four years.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Green?
I make a motion to approve this budget amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina general statute 143-1318/CC and 143-318.11/CC, I move the Grand County Board of Education Board to close session to receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, attorney for the Grand County School Board of Education, which advice comes, uh, within the purview of attorney client privilege. Advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provision of the North Carolina general statute 143-318.11/CC, I move the Grand County Board of Education Board to close session for the purpose of considering personnel matters as defined in and allowed by the North Carolina general statute 143-318.11/CC and 150C 321.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We are now in closed session.
They put it back in there in this session.
What do you mean?
Motion.
Motion.
We didn't close. I don't know. Do I have a motion to go into open session? I'll make a motion.
I say.
This night seconded, all in favor?
Everybody's in.
Any opposed? I tell you, I'm not brain dead now.
We know.
All right, action items, uh, this night, personnel.
Okay, all right. Okay. I recommend a part-time P E position at the high school, D Wash.
Do I have a motion to approve D Wash as a part-time P E teacher at the high school?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend that you employ Dakota Burnett, Cody Burnett, in the position of C T E teacher at the middle school.
Do I have a motion to approve Cody Burnett as the R M S C T E teacher?
I make a motion, we approve Cody Burnett as Robinson Elementary School C T E teacher.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Go ahead.
I recommend Lauren McGuire for the middle school E L A teacher.
Do I have a motion to approve Lauren McGuire for the middle school E L A teacher?
I recommend Lauren for the, the teacher position.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Go ahead.
I recommend Lori Aldridge in the position of Robinson Elementary School music teacher.
Do I have a motion to approve Lori Aldridge as the elementary school music teacher?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Excuse me, who did the second? You voted in. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I recommend Mallory Shamblin and Danny West for the positions of elementary teachers.
Do I have a motion to approve as elementary school teachers, Mallory Shamblin and Danny West?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Go ahead.
I recommend for the position of transportation director, Adam Harkins.
Do I have a motion to approve Adam Harkins as the transportation director?
I move, we have, our, Adam Harkins as a transportation director.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Rebecca Welch in the position of preschool teacher assistant.
Do I have a motion to approve Rebecca Welch as a preschool teacher assistant?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend the following individuals for C T E summer workers, Rick Parron, Nikki Stewart, Kason McKannon, and Ryan Stewart.
What was that third name? Kason?
Kason McKannon.
K A N N, okay. Do I have a motion to approve Rick Parron, Kason McKannon, Nikki Stewart, and Ryan Stewart as C T E summer workers?
And that is a typo on my part, it's Ryan Sellers.
I'm sorry.
Typer on.
Ryan Sellers.
Ryan Sellers.
I move the entire of these four for C T E summer workers that were in this mention.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend for preschool and exceptional tutors' summer workers, Diane Wiggins and Diane Anderson.
Do I have a motion to approve Diane Wiggins and Diane Anderson as preschool and E C summer workers?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend the following group of students for, uh, summer maintenance workers, Lakin McKannon, Cooper Adams, Montana Lane, Alex Knight, and Ethan Orr.
Do I have a motion to approve for maintenance summer workers, Lakin McKannon, Cooper Adams, Alex Knight, Montana Lane, and Ethan Orr?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend for transportation summer workers, David Lovinggood and Larry Hyde.
Do I have a motion to approve David Lovinggood and Larry Hyde as transportation summer workers?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend for central office summer workers, Aubrey Nichols and Anna Ware.
Do I have a motion to approve Anna Ware and Aubrey Nichols as central office summer workers?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, now you're going to do these, this group or?
Well, I, I think there's a few that will pull out. So, um, I recommend as a, uh, cheerleading volunteer, Keely Jordan.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Keely Jordan as a cheerleading volunteer? Is that correct?
Assistant coach.
Assistant.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Assistant coach.
Assistant coach, Keely Jordan.
I move that we, uh, prefer as assistant coach to cheerleading, Keely Jordan.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Um, I recommend Julie Monroe as a volunteer for Cy Girls.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Julie Monroe as a volunteer for Cy Girls?
I so motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
So the following, I'll, I'll read the names, um, and Miss Knott, I'll, I'll either give you names, you have the names of these lots of workers, uh, but for the, for the public, summer child nutrition workers, Selena Jones, Chris Holcomb, Jackie Cron, Jade Hedrick, Alicia Farley, Amanda Phillips, Suzie Orr, and Marcella Allen for summer child nutrition workers.
Do I have a motion to approve summer child nutrition workers as presented by Ms. Knight?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
And another list that I'll share for the public's benefit, 21st Century, uh, summer workers, Wendy Uprat, Shannon Knott, Shaila Bush, Dusty Orr, Gracie Toomey, Tonga Stiles, Angela Tyler, Karen Lael, Becky Brock, Chinder Queen, Claudine Jones, Ellen Woods, Jessica Ayers, Crystal White, Colby White, and Brittany Tensher.
I just need to let the board know that Shannon Knott is my daughter-in-law.
All right, do I have a motion to allow Ms. Knott to vote for these summer workers seeing that her daughter-in-law is on the list?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? You may vote, Ms. Knott.
Thank you.
Do I have a, uh, motion to approve the 21st Century's, uh, C C Elsie summer workers as presented by Ms. Knight?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Go ahead.
Uh, I recommend the following Gear Up summer workers, Emmy Miller, Jesse Miller, Joanne Knight, Brittany Tensher, Tucker Cape, Lynn Lynn, and Abigail Knight.
Do I have a motion to approve for Gear Up summer workers, the list of names that Ms. Knight just presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes, thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend for elementary school reading camp workers, Robin Welker, Katie Phillips, Blaine Adams, Farrah Orr, Laura Beasley, Jocelyn Sadfield, and Lynette Anderson.
Do I have a motion to approve for elementary school reading camp workers, the list that Ms. Knight just presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Um, and the list of bus drivers for summer, it's the bus drivers that we have now as full-time drivers and also our list of substitutes, which is quite extensive. So I will just give you a list of those, um, Miss Knott, and anyone else that would like to do this, all of our current bus drivers and subs that we have.
I just need to let the board know that I must recuse myself from this vote because I'm on the list for substitute bus drivers. I can vote.
Okay, now, Ms. Davis, she can't vote at all.
I can tell you.
Participate.
You can't vote at improved income.
No, that's wrong.
Okay, so she can't vote at all.
I can't vote at all.
Okay. Do I have a, a motion to approve summer bus drivers as the list gives?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Yep, you got a second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Is that it?
That's on the list.
That's all that's on your list?
So, the number four, are yours or?
All right, announcements, Ms. Knight?
Um, I, so, two things. So one is, I did inform the board that when we got the final engineering report for the stadium, that I will let the board know. And if need be, we may have to have an emergency meeting, which we will post to the public. Uh, so that is, will be determined on the, uh, receipt of that report. Um, other than that, unless there's a huge personnel issue, the next meeting we need to have will be the end of the year, end of the year, uh, meeting primarily for, uh, to wind up the, uh, financials for the end of the year. And, uh, there will be some personnel for, uh, coaching contracts for next school year. So, uh, primarily those two purposes. Mr. Green, looking at the calendar, um, do you, but you have to have that as close as you can to the end of the year in the gym.
That's correct. Uh, currently with my calendar, June 29th or 30th, uh, works for me.
It's the 29th.
29th is on a Thursday, 30th is on a Friday.
I like 29.
Yeah, 30th is my birthday, so.
Well, she has an appointment, so I'm not sure I can be here. I'm not sure when her appointment is. I think, I think it's in the afternoon, so I think I can do the 29th, but it is her birthday.
This is a special call meeting, so you wouldn't have to have a 10, you'd have it at 15, at 30?
Sure.
Yeah, whatever.
Are those late to work?
I think her appointment's in the afternoon with the doctor, so around the morning would probably be.
Yeah, do I have a motion to, uh, have a meeting on June 29th at 8:30?
Right.
Or, or do we decide?
Well, we haven't decided anything.
Between nights good with me, but it can't be in that, because I think her appointment's in the afternoon.
Okay. Do I have a motion to have the, uh, special call meeting on June 29th at 8:30? I'm just throwing that out there if that's.
Okay, I make a motion that we have a June 29th meeting.
Okay, 8:30?
8:30 is fine.
Okay.
It's way 30.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I think that's eight.
I think. Do I have, uh, do I have a second? Do you second it? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so our next meeting, Mr. Green, it's June 29th at 8:30.
Got you.
We can do that. All right, anything else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor?